Good evening. This ninth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Before we move into tonight's proceeding, I would like to take a moment to thank Director Zaid, the Department of Public Works, and the incredible sanitation workers who allowed us to ride along with them on Friday. Several members of the council were able to join us for the collection of recycling in Little Italy and Jonestown. I especially want to call out and thank Councilman Tony Glover for his leadership. Appreciate you pulling us all together, appreciate you making worker safety, and particularly sanitation worker safety, a focus of this city council. And being out there with you on the truck meant a lot. So, thank you, Councilmen. We often talk about the hard work that our sanitation workers do every day, and you can't really appreciate how priceless their labor is until you've walked a mile in their shoes and wrestled with heavy recycling bins, with smelly trash that somehow gets into the recycling, or with the glass particles that are flying up at your face. And as we've often said, a sanitation worker simply... Our sanitation workers are not paid enough. The most sanitation worker will earn in Baltimore City is just over forty-four thousand dollars a year. They deserve a raise. I look forward to working with my colleagues on the council and the administration to secure it for them. Also grateful to have our friends and partners in this work from AFSCME, from Cub, with us here as well today. I'd like to thank Empowerment Temple for allowing me to join them yesterday to talk about what our city council is doing to fight for rate relief from BGE. Every member of this body has heard from their constituents about the pain that BGE rate increases are causing. Everywhere I've gone the past few months, folks know that it is a vital issue, and they appreciate the council is fighting for them. But that work is not over. Whether we're talking about pay raise for our frontline workers, or fighting back against rate hikes that our residents cannot afford, we must remain focused on these issues that impact our residents. Tonight's invocation will be offered by the Reverend Dr. R.J. Chandler, Senior of Freedom Temple African American Methodist Episcopal Zion Church. Reverend Chandler, the floor is yours.
My brothers and sisters. Let us pray. Gracious Lord, we thank you for allowing us to come together to handle the business and affairs of the city of Baltimore. We thank you for all of our public servants who give unselfishly to the work of building a stronger infrastructure, restoring and reviving our communities, and advancing the cause of prosperity for all hardworking, tax-paying residents. May we never forget that Baltimore is a special place. We are the birthplace of the Star Spangled Banner. Proudly, we are the land of the free and home of the brave. With a rich history and culture, we owe it to our fellow Baltimoreans to be creative, innovative, and engineering common sense legislation. Please give the council's decisions as they deliberate with a commonality of equity, equality, and inclusion. We thank you for the privilege to serve. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Chandler. Appreciate the great words. Councilmember Blanchard will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journal for the April seventh, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing none, the journal is adopted. We'll now turn to executive nominations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-one-three Bella Grace Luciana Anibal, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-four Madison Hope, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-five Kalea Amir- Amiriara Flanagan, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-one-six Stephanie Summer Ogle, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-one-seven Talia Bridget Thomas, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-eight Christian Ato, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-one-nine Trevor White, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-two-zero Gabriel Caden Freeman, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-two-one Jocelyn Zamora Rojas, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-two-two Vernon Beckford, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-two-three Noah Stevenson, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-two-four Curtis Cedric Johnson, Jr., Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-two-five Deanna Nicole Pryor, Member, Baltimore City Youth Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. That concludes executive nominations. Now we move on to bills being introduced. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-five-nine Building, Fire, and Related Codes, Vacant Building Receivers, Failure to Sell, For the Purpose of Permitting a Vacant Building Receiver to Offer the Property for Sale to the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore City if the property fails to sell at public auction and providing certain limitations on the sale price. Lead sponsor Gray. Co-sponsors Dorsey, Conway, Middleton, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilman Gray, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I'm introducing legislation today aimed at strengthening Baltimore's fight against vacant and abandoned properties, a challenge that affects the safety, health, and future of our communities. As of twenty-twenty-four, Baltimore's had more than thirteen thousand vacant properties, with many concentrated and historically underserved neighborhoods. Vacancies cost the city an estimated a hundred million dollars in lost property taxes, public safety costs, and declining property values. They are just not eyesores, they're barriers, literal, to investment, opportunity, and neighborhood pride. Under current law, lar, law, sorry, when a vacant property enters receivership, it is typically put up for auction to get in the hands of responsible owners. But when a property fails to sell at auction, it often falls through the cracks and sits idle, sometimes for years, compounding the damage to the surrounding area. My bill provides a straightforward solution. If a receiver cannot sell a vacant property at auction, they may offer it to sale directly to the mayor and city council. The city will purchase it for no more than the cost the receiver incurred preparing and holding the auction. This approach prevents properties from slipping back into legal limbo. It allows the city to regain control of these properties faster, bundle them into redevelopment opportunities, and most importantly, restore hope to our communities. By making this small but important fix, we can close a gap in our housing and revitalization strategy and move one step closer to building the Baltimore our residents deserve. I respectfully urge your support on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. I see Councilman Parker, assumed co-sponsor, or, okay, and Councilman Torrance. Madam Clerk, you could note Torrance, Glover, and Parker as co-sponsors as well. Thank you, Councilman Gray. This bill has been assigned to the Housing and Economic Development Committee. We will now move to resolutions of the city council. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-eight-R, Celebrating Second Chance Month for the purpose of recognizing April as Second Chance Month in Baltimore City, encouraging city agencies, employers, community organizations, and residents to support efforts that eliminate barriers to individuals reentering the community following incarceration, and to promote the full inclusion of returning citizens in all aspects of society. Lead sponsor Torrance. Co-sponsors Parker, Conway, Middleton, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilman Torrance, you have the floor. Please add, just before you go, please add Councilman Schleifer as co-sponsor as well. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I rise as a son of two formerly incarcerated persons. My mama and my father both did time in prison. They made a small mistake. That mistake led to collateral bars from housing. My mother, at the age of thirty-eight, because of her criminal conviction with the not help care, and she eventually died of cancer. My father, who was previously incarcerated, only found employment at Roy Rogers. So, for the young men and women who live in our city and are dealing with... Thank you, sir. ...dealing with the causes of incarceration, it was incumbent upon me, as a person who represents the district that receives the most incarcerated persons in Baltimore City, to make sure that we have resources for them. That mission was to make sure that when a person eighteen months before release has a plan... One of the number one reasons a person is committed back to incarceration is because they don't have an actual home to live in. And often, when you're given that exit interview before you leave, you lie about your actual housing situation to make so that you can be released. And once they find out you don't have that housing situation, you are then sent back to finish your sentence. That small conversation leads to years of your life taken away from you once again. So, it was incumbent on working with the mayor's office that we created an office that will forever be in city statue, which is the Office of Returning Citizens. Thanks to the last council, we signed that into law on April twenty-fifth last year. This year, we're making sure that we move forward. A number of people have come to me and said, "Second chances are great, but no one's giving me that second chance." So, next week, we will be introducing legislation at the next council that will do a disparity study, so that we can look at how we can prioritize persons who are returning citizens or own a business that employs fifty percent or more returning citizens to actually get city contracts. Because if we're going to give people a second chance, we got to bridge the opportunity gap in Baltimore City. And for me, it is the stories of when Pivot found a young lady who had five children housing and worked with this office to get her six months paid rent in a security deposit when no one else would house her. Or to a former client of mine who looked like Snoop Off the Wire, but was being prosecuted because she, they couldn't find drugs on her, so they prosecuted her for prostitution. And she was denied housing after thirteen non-prosecutions. And now she's married with children and had to overcome that in just merely a housing application. Or there's a young man who's in prison who can't read, who's finally getting access through B-triple-C and Copping to finally get his bachelor's degree now. These opportunities lie in our city, but I just want to make sure that we, as a council, not only celebrate Second Chance Month, but show our votes that we've recommended, and that we also stand by the people who are coming back to Baltimore. When I was discussing this with friends in Chicago, in DC, and also Boston, who have offices of returning citizens, their murder rate came down simply by just investing in returning citizens. Why? Because persons who were previously incarcerated were twelve times as likely to be a victim of homicide or a person who committed that homicide. So, if we invest in someone early on, we prevent the collateral damage that happens because of a simple mistake. So, Mr. President, I rise and I ask that we suspend the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution to recognize Second Chance Month, but also celebrate the chance that Baltimore believes in redemption and believes in second chances.
Before suspending the rules, I do just want to thank Councilmember Torrance for his ongoing leadership when it comes to reentry. Last council, as he mentioned, he passed an important bill that really set us on this path. I was able yesterday, or last week, to engage with the reentry council that Councilmember Torrance's legislation authorized. And to see folks in our city digging in, working collaboratively on this important issue is really heartening. Because just like he said, we know that we can either pay for it before or we can pay for it after something awful happens. And if we don't interrupt that cycle of reincarceration, we know the cost for our city and our community. And so, again, appreciate Councilmember Torrance's ongoing leadership on this issue. And without objection, the rules will be suspended. Please note, Councilman Glover, as a co-sponsor, the rules are suspended.
I move for immediate adoption.
The clerk will call the roll.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. Motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
And then, for a moment, a personal privilege, Mr. President.
Please.
May I recognize the members of the Returning Citizens Action Council who are present here today? If you can please stand.
Mr. President, these are individuals who are not only just persons who are returning citizens, but persons who are investing their personal time, their treasure, and their talents, and actually investing in returning citizens. A number of them are service providers, a number of them are peer mentors, and a number of them have navigated this experience by themselves with no help from the city or any agency. So, I just want to say thank you to them, but also continue to do the work that you do.
Thank you, Councilmember. This resolution has been adopted. And thank you all for your service to our city.
City Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero-zero-one-nine-R, Recognizing May as Jewish American Heritage Month for the purpose of recognizing May as Jewish American Heritage Month in Baltimore City and celebrating the significant contributions of the Jewish community to American culture, history, science, government, and beyond. Lead sponsor Schleifer. Co-sponsors Parker, Conway, Middleton, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilman Schleifer, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, communities all across the country are going to be recognizing May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Here in Baltimore, I first want to recognize you, Council President Cohen, for your contributions, as well as to our other citywide Jewish elected officials like Sheriff Sam Kogan. In the state, I also want to recognize our state representatives who formed a Legislative Jewish Caucus at the state that has many members. It was formed after October seventh and led by Senator Shelley Hettelman, as well as Delegate Jared Solomon. With anti-Semitism at record levels across the country, including many incidents here in Baltimore, it's important to stand together and recognizing the contributions and our shared history that got us where we are today. Neighborhoods in my district and across the city had covenants that said no black or Jewish people could purchase homes there. Country clubs in the area excluded our communities. But thankfully, many years ago, black and Jewish community leaders fought together, marched together, and secured landmark legal victories to get over those discriminatory practices to get us where we are today. And so, I want to highlight that, and I want to welcome and thank all of my colleagues who have co-sponsored and their support for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. I see Torrance, Glover as additional co-sponsors. I want to, again, thank Councilman Schleifer for his leadership in being a leading voice both in Baltimore and nationally for the Jewish community. Councilman, do you want to suspend the rules?
Sure, I'd like to suspend the appropriate rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
So, I'd like to move this bill forward.
Madam Clerk, Councilman will move the resolution.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. Again, thank you, Councilman, for your leadership.
City Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero-zero-two-zero-R, Informational Hearing, Well-being of Gay Men in Baltimore City for the purpose of inviting representatives from the mayor's office, the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City Public School System, the mayor's Office of Homeless Services, the mayor's Office of Employment Development, the mayor's Office of LGBTQ Affairs, the mayor's, the Baltimore City Office of Equity and Civil Rights, the Office of the State's Attorney for Baltimore City, the Baltimore City Department of Social Services, the Maryland Department of Health and Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore, to update the council on services provided to and the general well-being of gay men in Baltimore. Lead sponsor Porter. Co-sponsors Parker, Conway, Gray, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilmember Porter, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. All, I just want to share that this is in line with a series of mental health wellbeings for various underserved populations that are in Baltimore City. We know that mental health is essential to overall well-being, and for our LGBTQ plus community, it's even more urgent. Every person deserves to live with dignity, safety, and access to care that supports the whole self. LGBTQ plus people face higher rates of mental health struggles compared to the general population, and it is not because of who they are, it is because of discrimination, isolation, and barriers they experience every single day. The numbers are heartbreaking. According to research, twenty, in twenty-twenty-four, nearly one in three LGBTQ plus youth seriously considered suicide in the past year. We know, as a council, good policy saves lives. And when we pass protections against discrimination, fund mental health services, and require inclusive and affirming care, we send a clear message that, to all, that you belong here and you matter. We also understand that public policy is not just paperwork, it is hope made real. We must, we need to fully invest in our mental health programs that center LGBTQ plus needs, and we need laws that protect the access to healthcare, safe housing, and affirming spaces. And when we must stand against any policy that tries to erase, exclude, or harm our LGBTQ plus neighbors, we must and will imagine a future where every person feels seen, valued, and supported, where the number of young people thinking about suicide drops to zeros because they know they are loved. That future is possible, and in our chamber, it's only because of us, and we must act now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. This bill has been assigned to the Public Health and Environment Committee.
City Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero-zero-two-one-R, Informational Hearing, Well-being of Lesbian Women in Baltimore for the purpose of inviting representatives for the mayor's office, the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City Public School System, the mayor's Office of Homeless Services, the mayor's Office of Employment Development, the mayor's Office of LGBTQ Affairs, the Baltimore City Office of Equity and Civil Rights, the Office of the State's Attorney for Baltimore City, the Baltimore City Department of Social Services, the Maryland Department of Health and Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore, to update the council on services provided to and the general well-being of lesbian women in Baltimore. Lead sponsor Porter. Co-sponsors Parker, Conway, Gray, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilmember Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. For the remarks made aforementioned before, this is an opportunity for us to, again, check in on the well-being of the lesbian population here in Baltimore City. And I just want to just remind folks that, you know, when we think about the LGBTQ plus community, it is not a, it is not a monolith, it is not a collective. This is an opportunity for each of the respective communities in their own autonomy to request and access services and also have representation in the city council and also the city of Baltimore. While they are considered a collective, this is an opportunity for us to drill down within those vulnerable populations to really see what's happening and see how we can fix it moving forward. Thank you.
This bill has been assigned to the Public Health and Environment Committee. And again, thank you for your leadership on that committee.
City Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero-zero-two-two-R, Informational Hearing, Missing Persons Policies and Procedures for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Police Department, the Office of the State's Attorney for Baltimore City, including the Juvenile Division, the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services, the Maryland Department of Human Services, including Child Protective Services, Black and Missing, and other relevant stakeholders, to brief the city council regarding policies and procedures pertaining to incidents of missing persons and requesting data concerning such incidences, as well as data regarding staffing and turnover, including Baltimore City Police Department Missing Persons Unit data and district-specific data for the past five years. Lead sponsor Gray. Co-sponsors Parker, Conway, Middleton, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilmember Gray, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Across the United States, over six hundred thousand people are reported missing each year according to the National Missing and Unidentified Person System. While most cases are resolved quickly, thousands remain open, leaving families trapped in agonizing uncertainty, a quiet crisis that many do not talk about until it impacts them. In cities like Baltimore, where we face complex social challenges, vulnerable populations, especially youth, women, and communities of color, are disproportionately impacted. In fact, black individuals make up thirteen percent of the US population but represent nearly forty percent of the missing person cases. There's been a growing public concern, both locally and nationally, about delays in investigations, gaps in communications, and inconsistencies on how cases are prioritized and handled. We have a duty to ensure that the system designed to protect and find vulnerable individuals are working as they should and for all missing persons, no matter their race, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or the circumstances in which they went missing. This is why my resolution calls for an informational hearing, bringing together the Baltimore Police Department, the State Attorney's Office, Juvenile Services, Child Protective Services, and community advocates like Black and Missing to understand where gaps exist and how can we, and how we can improve outcomes and processes. By holding this hearing, we reaffirm our commitment to accountability, transparency, and justice for every Baltimorean. Every missing person is someone's loved one. It's a child, a parent, a neighbor, a friend. When a person goes missing, the immediate hours and days can be critical. Families deserve a swift, transparent, coordinated, and compassionate response by agencies. I urge your support for this resolution so we can learn more and take the necessary steps to establish best practices in reporting, investigating, and tracking missing persons for our residents and our families and for all the people of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. This bill has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero-zero-two-three-R, Workers Memorial Day for the purpose of recognizing April twenty-eighth as Workers Memorial Day. Lead sponsor Jones. Co-sponsors Parker, Conway, Middleton, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilman Jones, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I stand before you today, not just as a councilman, but as a labor leader in a son of Baltimore, a city built by callous hands and an unyearly, yearing, and a unyearding spirit for working people. Today, I introduce a resolution to recognize Workers Memorial Day, a day of remembrance and a call to action. Each year, on April twenty-eighth, we pause to remember the working people who lost their lives or suffered injuries or illnesses as a result of simply doing their jobs. These are our neighbors, our family members, and our friends, the people who wake up in the morning and left for work expecting to come home, but never did. We honor their memories, not only by mourning their loss, but by recommitting ourselves to the ongoing fight for workplace safety and dignity on the job, and the fundamental principle that no one should have to pay, should have to sacrifice their health or their life for a paycheck. Just over a year ago, six workers lost their lives in the tragic collapse of the Francis Scott Key Bridge while performing overnight maintenance. In addition, we lost two workers in our own DPW family. Their deaths and countless others are not isolated incidents. They are the result of systematic failures, of corners cut, protections ignored, and profits privatized over, privatized over people. And this is unacceptable. We must confront this reality with urgency and resolve. Our city must lead by example, ensuring that every worker, from sanitation crews to healthcare providers, operate... to healthcare providers, operate in a safe environment. We must, we must strengthen enforcement of safety regulations, support unions that advocate for workers' rights, and hold accountable those who jeopardize lives for the sake of expediency. Baltimore is a union town. It's a working-class town, and we know that the rights and protections of workers that workers have today, from basic safety standards to the right to organize were not given freely. They were won through struggle and often great personal cause. And while we have made progress, the work is far from finished. Passing this resolution will send a clear message that Baltimore will stand with workers, we will remember those who we lost, and we will continue to fight for the living. I respectfully urge my colleagues to support this resolution, and I'd like to make a motion to suspend the appropriate rules for immediate adoption, Mr. President.
Before you do so, just a few words. First off, I wanna thank, uh, Councilman Chairman Jones for his leadership, um, for his dedication to our labor partners, to workers across the city. I said it this morning, but we are facing one of the most hostile, probably the most hostile administration from Washington DC we've ever seen, and I don't care if you show up at a McDonald's and pretend to serve fries for 20 minutes. This administration is extremely hostile to working people. That means going after MoSh, that means going after the NLRB, that means dozing your way into cutting so much of the federal workforce for absolutely no reason. Folks who are just there to serve their country, um, just as we're doing in this chamber, have lost their job due to a president who does not respect work or workers. And so it is an opportunity here in the city of Baltimore, just like Councilman Jones said, for us to be the most strong-facing city council Baltimore has ever seen when it comes to supporting working people. And I'll just say, when I was out there, out on the truck with my colleagues, um, working with our sanitation workers, I could see how it's so easy in that job that we all take for granted to get hurt. That's why 1,643 people have been injured in the last four, five years doing that work, not to mention, uh, our brother Ronald Silver, uh, Mr. Cartwell, Trina, all the folks who have lost their lives as city employees. Now is the time, just like Chairman Jones said, for us to not just commit through this resolution, but through our work, through policy, to a worker safety culture across the city of Baltimore. And again, it is having someone like Jermaine Jones as our labor chair leading us when it comes to supporting working people that I know will bring us there. With that, um, without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
Yes, and I would like to make a motion, uh, for immediate adoption. Well, for vote.
Uh, before the clerk calls the roll, recognizing, uh, Torrance, Schleifer, and Glover as co-sponsors. Um, uh, the clerk will call the roll.
Parker.
Yes.
McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones.
Aye.
Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. I would ask all of our labor family to please stand up and be recognized. Appreciate you. Chair recognizes Councilman Joan, Jones.
I just wanted to take a moment of personal privilege and also recognize, uh, the workers and the labor leaders in this room for your advocacy. It's on your backs that your members have a voice. And just wanna thank you for always encouraging me and pushing me to put workers first, and it's through that partnership, we're gonna make sure Baltimore is the type of town that it needs to be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution 25-0024-R: Informational Hearing, Public Safety, Ratepayer Impact, and Oversight Failures in Baltimore Gas and Electric Company Line Inspections. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore Gas and Electric Company, BGE, and the Maryland Public Service Commission, PSC, to appear before the city council to provide testimony and documentation regarding oversight failures in BGE gas infrastructure inspections. Lead sponsors Conway and Cohen, co-sponsors Parker, Gray, Bullock, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos.
Chair recognizes Councilman Conway.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, this, uh, resolution comes on the back and the tails of some of the great work already done by yourself, uh, Chair Schleifer, Vice Chair Glover, around BGE and rate hikes. Um, we learned recently that, um, there were BGE inspectors that had not been inspecting gas lines across the city. Um, gas lines that they've been installing all over the city, um, on the backs of the idea that it's for safety and making sure that those gas lines are safe. You can't guarantee those gas lines are safe if you're not inspecting them. Um, these gas line installations are resulting in significant increases in rates for ratepayers, resulting in bills that are now double, uh, for many folks across the city, forcing folks to make decisions about whether or not they're gonna buy oxygen or food for the next night, uh, or pay their energy bill. Um, we wanna make sure that, uh, we have, uh, an opportunity to talk with BGE about this activity and learn as much as we can about why these inspections are, are not happening, and even more, how pervasive this activity is, so that we can better understand, um, what is happening, what actually goes into our rate increases, and whether or not these expenses are actually being, uh, placed on ratepayers regardless of the fact of whether or not they actually happen. Um, so looking forward to having a robust conversation with BGE, with PSC, and the folks that have a bearing on the rate increases that we're seeing, and even more, ensuring that, um, our gas lines and any systems across the city are perfectly safe for the people of Baltimore. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Conway, and look, it is my hope and expectation that the new leadership at BGE is more receptive to engaging productively with the city council. We know that our constituents are hurting across the city. To your point, we know that the Public Service Commission pointed out some potential flaws in BGE's inspection system, and so we want to have a productive dialogue with the new leadership at BGE as well as the Public Service Commission. So again, thank you to Councilman Conway. Um, please note Councilman Schleifer as a co-sponsor. This bill has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the desk documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Consent calendar is approved. We now move on to bills on second reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Mr. President, I move that we read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Without objection, we will proceed with reading short titles. We will proceed with reading short titles. We begin with bills from the Public Health and Environment Committee. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 25-0013: Child Health, Equitable Access to Health Services in City Schools.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Porter, Chair Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Um, we had, uh, we had a bill for, we had a hearing for child health, equitable access to health services in city schools. Uh, it was recommended for, it was recommended favorably with amendment.
Thank you, Chair Porter. Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on any of the amendments? Um. Uh, do you wanna explain any of the amendments, Madam Chair?
Shu, sure. Actually, hold on one second, please.
Tick down.
My apologies, Mr. President. Um, Legislative Services mentioned that they were not included in the consent packet.
Hang on one second. Sure. Uh, Madam Chair, for now, I'm gonna ask that we table this, uh, your amendments and this bill for one minute. We're gonna go on to the Land Use and Public Transportation Committee.
Thank you.
Uh, we, I apologize. We are going to postpone, um, these amendments and this vote. Um, we will now move on to... Uh, we now move to bills from the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Councilman Dorsey, floor is yours.
City Council Bill 25-0021: Rezoning, 3221 Frederick Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard, uh, last week on Thursday. April 24th, it was recommended favorable by the committee. There are findings of fact on, uh, in the desk documents, my colleagues. I move the finding of facts.
Sorry, Councilman. Give me one second here. Um, before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on the findings of fact? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the findings of facts, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes and the finding of facts are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on the bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill 25-0022: Rezoning, R8 Zoning District, Conditional Use, Maximum Building Height Variance is 1121 Bayard Street.
Mr. President, this bill was also heard last Thursday, April 24th. It was recommended favorable by the committee. There are finding of facts for this bill in the, uh, desk documents distributed, colleagues. I move the finding of facts.
Any debate or discussion on the finding of facts? All those in favor of adopting the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes and the finding of facts are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. God bless you, does not count. Um, this bill will be printed for a third reading.
City Council Bill 25-0023: Rezoning, 3200 Lilly Avenue.
Mr. President, this bill was also heard last Thursday, April 24th. It was recommended by the committee as favorable. There are finding of fact for this in the desk documents. I move those findings.
Before we vote, any debate or discussion on the finding of facts? All those in favor of adopting the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes and the finding of facts are adopted.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. Thank you, Councilman Chair Dorsey. All right. We are going back to the Public Health Committee. Um, we will proceed, um, with bills from the Public Health and Environmental Committee. Um, Chair recognizes Council, no? Okay. Okay.
City Council Bill 25-0013: Child Health, Equitable Access to Health Services in Baltimore City Schools.
No?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, um, but Legislative Services doesn't have the amendment printed out yet. As soon as they have the amendment printed out, we'll hand it out to all of my councilmembers and we'll go over it.
Got it. Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have the amendments for the gas lower? No, okay. All right. All right. We now move to the first and only bill on third reader. Madam Clerk, please read the bill and call the roll.
City Council Bill 25-0006: Zoning Code Modifications. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved. Now, committee announcements. First, I'd like to announce that Council, City Council Bill 25-0052 has been reassigned from the Labor and Workforce Committee to the Public Health and Environment Committee. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Budget and Appropriations, Chair McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold the following hearings on Tuesday, May the 6th, 2025, beginning at 9:10 AM. Council Bill 25-0045: Supplementary State Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Recreation and Parks, Services 654 Urban Forestry, for $90,000. Council Bill 25-0046: Supplementary State Fund Operating Appropriation, Health Department, $90,236. Council Bill 25-0047: Supplementary Federal Fund Operating Appropriation, Office of, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, Service 795, 206, $1,822. Council Bill 25-0048: Supplementary Federal Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, $1,375,655. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will also hold the following hearings on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, beginning at 10 AM. That's gonna be Council Bill 25-0036: Property Taxes, Baltimore City Payment in Lue of Taxes Task Force. The Baltimore City Council will hold its Taxpayers Night on Thursday, May the 15th, 2025, beginning at 5 PM. Taxpayers Night provides the residents of Baltimore City with the opportunity to share comments and concerns about the city's budget. And last, the budget schedule will be posted on the city council website. It is subject to be changed and/or updated. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you say the date one more time for Taxpayer Night?
That date is Thursday, May the 15th, 2025, beginning at 5 PM.
Much appreciated. Education, youth, and older adults. No announcements. Housing and Economic Development, Chairman Torrance, no announcements. Labor and Workforce, Chairman Jones. No announcements. Land Use and Transportation, Chair Dorsey. No announcements. Legislative Investigations, Chair Schleifer. No announcements. Public Health and Environment, Chair Porter. And Public Safety, Chair Conway.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, uh, issue a reminder, um, Chair Bullock and I are going to be hosting our first, very first, um, joint committee hearing, and also the very first, um, off-site committee hearing, um, in order to look into summer youth engagement strategies across the city. Um, it's gonna be this Thursday, 4 PM, at Edmonton Westside High. Um, we'll be discussing first, um, what our sort of late-night experiences will be with young people across the city, noting that we've had issues in the past, and we wanna be very thoughtful about those plans going forward. And two, we'll be talking about some of the summer youth engagement gaps, um, that the city wants to address, and what thoughts, um, our city agencies have in addressing those gaps. So just wanted to put that back on everyone's agenda. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Chairman, could you just say one more time, date, time, and the location for that hearing? Because as you suggested, it is the first one we're hosting off-campus.
Yes, it's gonna be, uh, 4 PM at Edmonton Westside High School. Um, so 4 PM, Edmonton Westside High School. Uh, anything else I'm forgetting here? No. I think that's all. I think that's all you need to know. Just be there. We will be accepting public testimony, so please come with your thoughts, with your perspectives, certainly with your questions, and we'll try to hopefully address those as they come up in the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the collaboration between you and Chairman Bullock on that and also appreciate you taking it off-campus into a school. I think it's important for community to know that we are doing our business not just here at City Hall but out in community. We are going to go back to bills on second reader. We are going to proceed with bills from the Public Health and Environmental Committee. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 25-0013, Child Health: Equitable Access to Health Services in City Schools.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Porter. Chair Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Colleagues, you've received a copy of the three amendments that were discussed during the Public Health and Environment Committee. Just to kind of go through each amendment, the first one, Amendment Number One, strikes the process of attempting to ascertain if recommended services have been obtained. That's something that was raised by the Health Department. Again, they don't have the capacity to follow up with every referral that comes from their office to required services, and so we agreed to strike that one. Number two, we agreed to strike shall and substitute may, so it provides opportunity and autonomy to the Health Department to work with nonprofit partners for services as well. And they also struck School Health Suite to include, to include in the legislation as well. Number three, we struck mandatory follow-up and we just actually substituted for follow-up. So again, that provides and takes into account the capacity issues within the Baltimore City Health Department that there, if there is follow-up for required services, it can be delivered by nonprofit partners as opposed to those within the school and/or the Health Department. Thank you.
Got it. And do you wish to move the amendments?
Yes, I wish to move the amendment, sir.
Excellent. Before we vote, any debate or discussion on the committee amendments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion passes and the amendments...
Mr. President, Chair Porter, I don't think we had a second on that, so I will second that.
Thank you.
Don't need a second on it.
That's fair.
Okay. The motion passes and the amendments are adopted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call for a bill.
Move the bill favorable as amended.
As amended, yes.
Any debate or discussion on this amended bill? All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill 25-0035, Gas Power Debris Removal Equipment Prohibition Enforcement.
Recognize Chair Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. The Public Health and Environment Subcommittee held a hearing on gas power debris removal and equipment prohibition and enforcement. During the committee hearing, there was one amendment that was offered and accepted during the committee hearing process. And just to explain it for my colleagues, on page three, line 16, we agreed to strike may and substitute shall. And then in line 10, agreed to strike person and substitute person, individual contractor or subcontractor. Mr. President, I'd like to move the amendments.
For adoption. Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of adopting the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The motion passes. Please note nays from Councilmember Schleifer and Councilmember Glover. The motion passes and the amendment is adopted. Councilmember Porter.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the bill as amended.
Is there any debate or discussion on the amended bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Please note nays from Councilmember Schleifer, Councilmember Glover, and an abstention from Councilmember Conway. This bill is approved and will be printed, or I'm sorry, this bill will be printed for third reading.
Mr. President.
Councilmember Conway?
I'd like to explain my abstention. It came to my attention, constituent of mine brought to my attention that there are instances where folks may have, they may get cited because they hired a contractor that did the work when they were maybe not even home. In those instances, I'm trying to make sure that the homeowner is not fined in those instances, but instead the contractor would be fined. And so trying to work with the sponsor to figure out how we can do that appropriately. I support the bill. I do have concerns about that component and its fairness. Thank you.
Appreciated and noted. We now move to regular announcements. Sorry for the confusion. Members, please wait to be recognized to make any regular announcements. All right. Tonight's district spot. Oh, Torrance.
I'll bring some good news, Mr. President. It has been a busy, busy, busy five days in the 7th District. We got good news. We just opened the mill on North Avenue, which is the first food hall on West North Avenue. Six years coming, but it came, thank you. Also today, we announced Streets will be the first grocery store back on North Avenue in 20 years. And in addition to that, we broke ground on Moet's new building that will be a 21st Century building that will be doing our workforce development for the city of Baltimore, also on West North Avenue again, sir. So with that being said, it's a great day in West Baltimore, and it's been a long time coming, and I'm thankful to my neighbors and also those who chose to invest in West Baltimore.
And you know that St. Francis, $10 million investment ribbon cutting, so very good times in West Baltimore.
That is correct. St. Francis just opened back up with a $10 million investment of a community center. And then for some of our friends, come June, he will be able to walk around Druid Hill Park again, around the loop, and... And we all look forward to you guys coming to the 7th District for Afran. Please come. Don't bark on the grass.
Thank you. Duly noted. Other regular announcements? Madam Vice President.
Since you're announcing some good things, and our next council meeting is not until May 12th, but on May 10th, Saturday, May 10th, it's going to be a long day coming for Park Heights. The Henson Project at 17 Acres has its first grand opening of an older adult facility right at the corner of Park Heights Avenue and Woodland, and that's really the very first project on that development site. And also on the grounds will be the fourth Spider Anderson Festival. Spider Anderson was the first African-American jockey in Baltimore, so Park Heights has been honoring him for the fourth year in a row, and it's going to be a whole lineup, and everyone is welcome to come. It's going to be, right after the grand opening of that facility, right across the street, will be all kinds of activities, horse riding, vendors. We'll have the big city stage with all kinds of vendors and food trucks and the First Lady of Baltimore and the First Lady of Maryland. This is really their, they're like the main sponsors of this particular, for this particular year, and so we're going to have some added activities and doing that Park Heights strut, so all are welcome.
Anybody else got good news? Going once, Councilmember Glover?
Can you show us how the dance go? You said we're going to be doing a Park Heights strut, right? Can you, can you show us? I mean, I don't know how.
Next council meeting, Councilman. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. All right, tonight's district spotlight comes from Councilmember Ramos. Oh my goodness, Torrance, this better be good, man.
Last one. May 1st is this week and is the Council Vice President's birthday.
With that, tonight's district spotlight comes from Councilmember Ramos of the 14th District. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I get to start over. Excellent. I, this is a map of my district. It is the back of my business card. You can see the new district here. I also want to share the great news in the 14th District. Now, first of all, the 14th District is the home of many trailblazers and history makers. It is the home of the first woman to run and win citywide and be the first woman president of the City Council, Mary Pat Clark. It is the current home of the first woman to win a U.S. Senate seat in her own right, Senator Barbara Mikulski. It is the home of the first woman Majority Leader in the General Assembly and first-out lesbian legislator, Delegate Maggie McIntosh. She's came from our district. It is also the home of the first-out Black woman lesbian legislator, Senator Mary Washington. She makes her home in our district. Our first Black governor, Wes Moore, won the governor's race while my constituent in the 14th District. And shameless plug here, our city's first Hispanic-Latino elected official came from our district. That indeed is me. So we are a district of firsts. Also, the 14th District is the home to our, many of our city's preeminent landmarks and assets like Lake Montebello, which is fully open for your enjoyment, the Baltimore Museum of Art, Johns Hopkins University, southern portion of Morgan State University, Council President Mary Pat Clark playground, the former Memorial Stadium on 33rd Street, which is now Stadium Place, and the Waverly Y. We now have the Baltimore Book Festival in our district. The first baseball field where the Orioles played is now Peabody Heights Brewery. There are 11 bookstores in our district, great schools, amazing parks, and the upcoming landmark project in Coldstream Homestead Montebello, which will be 125 homes on Tavoli Avenue, which are the city's first net-zero development. Our amazing Main Streets include the Waverly Main Street, Hamden Village Martins, the Cold Spring Lane, which I share with Council Vice President. I also share Hamden Village with my colleague from the 7th. There is, and also in Charles Village, there's nowhere better to celebrate Christmas than in our district, the Miracle on 34th Street, and during our Christmas Parade. Most importantly, our residents make our district thrive. I have the honor and privilege to serve a district of 22 very strong communities and even more community associations who collaborate together to get things done. Recently, Remington, Charles Village, Abel, and Harwood collaborated together to get over 200 trees planted throughout all four neighborhoods. And Coldstream Homestead Montebello, Edna Gardens, and Mayfield advocate strongly for Lake Montebello. Better Waverly, Waverly, Oak and Shaw and Abel work together to foster our Waverly Main Street, and we have developed a network to support each other in the event of fires and disasters. And I can go on and on about how amazing our district is. The exact center of my district, as you can see on the map, is Greenmount Avenue, where for a long time has been a dividing line between Black neighborhoods and white neighborhoods. This is why I'm passionate about getting it right on Greenmount Avenue, to ensure that it becomes a bridge, not a divide, and has the potential to do just that. As we work to surgically remove the vacant and abandoned properties along the corridor, our success is starting to show. With the opening of Red Emma's, Gingy Chocolate, Urban Reed's, Derek Adams' new gallery, and the Thai restaurant will open this summer, yes, we will have new wellness care shops, restaurants, and more, growing from our longtime anchors such as Herman's, Normals, and Waverly Krabs. Just watch as that transformation unfolds. Now, even though in redistricting I lost Sherwood Gardens and Clifton Park, I know that they are in good hands with my colleagues from the 4th and the 12th. I am proud to showcase my district and important news, and another shameless plug, excuse me, I am proud to showcase my district and important news happening in our city through our 90 Seconds with Odette videos that come out each week. Currently produced by Charm TV, we have been doing these videos weekly since the beginning of the pandemic. Each week, we feature another exciting part of the district or news that our constituents need to know. I enjoy these videos and work and look forward to continuing to promote the exciting work in my district and the work we get to do citywide. Thank you for the opportunity to brag a little bit about the district, and I'm so proud to represent such a vibrant set of communities.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos, for your leadership, for being a first, and we all really like the 90 Seconds with Odette thing, so keep doing them. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, May 12th, at 5 p.m. Please note that on May 1st and 8th, there will be special open meetings of the council at 10 a.m. and 12 p.m. respectively. There are no, there being no further business, this concludes the ninth regular meeting of the 74th term of the Baltimore City Council.